All right, I think we're ready to go now. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the first policy committee meeting of the year. First item up is approval of minutes from October. Minutes were set out. I didn't see anything really changed, but Todd, Tim or Sue, do you want to see anything? All right, so we're going to consider those minutes approved. Thank you. And we'll have a first period of public comment. We normally get a presentation on the consideration of whatever policies are raised on the docket. Then we have some board comment, committee comment and board comment. We hopefully provide opportunity for public comment throughout. But we also have an initial opportunity for public comment. Let's ask that you state your name for the record. Good evening.
Hi. I'm here with my husband Mark and our six-year-old daughter Margot, who is a color. We live in Wayne. I am here tonight speaking to make the school board aware of how a threat assessment policy is being implemented in the elementary schools of TE to the detriment of students. My daughter Margot is a kindergartner at Valley Ford Elementary School, and she now has a record with the Tredeborn Police Department for making a threat to her teacher. What type of threat could this adorable little girl have made? On November 19th, Margot, who has Down Syndrome and often struggles transitioning between activities, was asked by her teacher to do something she did not want to do. At one point in her refusal, she pointed her finger at her teacher and said, "I shoot you." I imagine the utterance would not unlike the instances when I told her it's time for bed, and she says, "I hate bed. I hate mommy." As most parents can attest, I have learned not to take offense, for I know that a short time later, she is usually cuddled up to me while we read bedtime stories and exchange kisses and cuddles before saying goodnight. At any rate, the teacher interpreted this response as a threat and brought Margot to the principal, who talked to my daughter and quickly determined that she neither understood what she was saying nor meant any harm to her teacher or any of her classmates. The principal then followed district policy and convened a threat assessment team. The threat assessment team met and determined Margot had made a, quote, "transient threat," which is simply an expression of anger or frustration with no intent to harm anyone. The threat assessment team recommended no disciplinary action. Also, there was no recommendation from the principal, Margot's teachers, nor any other members of Margot's IEP team to address the problem behavior in her IEP since it appeared to be an isolated event. I think most people would agree that this is where the issue should have ended, and yet it did not. Hours after the threat assessment team met, the principal informed me by phone that the school was still required under the district's policy to call the police regarding the incident. I disagreed and argued it was absurd to involve the police for an episode involving a kindergartner who pointed her finger not in malice but in protest to a request to change classrooms. The principal agreed to discuss the issue further with me the next day. After reviewing policy 5401, my husband and I did not see anywhere in the text that required the school to call the police for a transient threat. That evening, I sent an email recapping my concerns regarding the policy to Becky Wills, the principal, Ellen Turk, the district safety officer, Chris Grapi, director of individualized student services, and Mark Cataldi, director of assessment and accountability for the district. More than 24 hours later, after the incident had occurred, I received another phone call from Becky Wills and Ellen Turk, who told me they had conferred with the district's administration and concluded the policy required them to, quote, "consult law enforcement," unquote. Ellen Turk admitted during our discussion that the purpose of the so-called consultation with police was not applicable in Margot's case, but she said that because this was the district's policy, she had to follow it without exception for every student in every situation. There was no room for anyone in the district to use common sense to interpret the policy any differently. My husband Mark and I insisted on being on the phone when the call was made to the Tredeborn Police Department. The information that was relayed was the same as what you would be given, what would be given to law enforcement when filing a police report. They recorded my daughter's name, birthdate, and address. They asked for the names and birthdates of myself and my husband, and they took details of what happened. When I asked Officer Barnes, who took the call, if he viewed this as a consultation, he answered no. He said he was merely recording what had happened. I also asked how long the information would be held by the Tredeborn Police Department. He said it was entered into the department's database and would not be deleted or expunged after any reasonable time period. I asked who could access this information, and he said it was publicly available. I am well aware that we live in a time when parents are concerned for their children's safety in school. When I think of incidents at Parkland High School or Sandy Hook Elementary School, I too am haunted and disgusted. But I also think our society and our schools across the country have overreacted with respect to perceived threats, for instance resulting in even a finger gun-wielding kindergartner being viewed as cause to alert authorities. In fact, Dr. Dewey Cornell, professor of education at the University of Virginia, who developed the threat assessment program that TE district policy is modeled after, said as much in a webinar last month discussing best practices for threat assessment. Not only does he point out that statistically schools are far safer than other public places such as restaurants where people are 10 times more likely to be victims of homicide, he also warns of the damaging and costly mistake schools make in overreacting to perceived threats. Even though TE has adopted a threat assessment model that is supposed to minimize such overreactions as the one involving my kindergartner, the reality is that the way the policy is implemented is no different than the zero tolerance policies that experts say are ineffective and inappropriate, especially for elementary school students. In other words, regardless of the severity of the threat and regardless of the disciplinary action taken or not taken, TE escalates its response to police for each and every incident, regardless of how minor it may be and regardless of how young the student may be. The result is that a police record is generated and archived in each and every instance. I find this application of the threat assessment policy to be out of line with its intended purpose, which is to identify and help troubled students who may harm others in the future and to prevent that from happening. I do not believe the school board intended for our schools to create police records for kindergartners, engaging in developmentally appropriate, nonviolent behavior because they feel educators and administrators in our schools are not equipped to determine if a six-year-old pointing a finger at them is really a threat. As far as I am aware, no one in the history of mankind has ever been killed or hurt in this way. Escalating such incidents is not only a waste of school resources, but it also documents for local law enforcement, even the most minor infractions in childhood. I cannot emphasize enough how inappropriate this practice is for the children of this district. My daughter is but one example of how this policy has gone awry. Because the school staff and administration chose to blindly follow this policy, an incident that resulted in no disciplinary action nor any change to her IEP is part of her permanent school record. What's more, her personal information has also been recorded at our local police department, where it is noted without any context to the situation or her disability that she threatened her teacher. How or if this information will be used against her in the future, I can't say for certain. What I do know is that students like my daughter Margot, who have intellectual disabilities, are disproportionately disciplined in school. Data collected from the U.S. Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights found in a report published in 2018 that students with disabilities accounted for 28% of referrals to law enforcement for school-related arrests, 26% of out-of-school suspensions, and 24% of expulsions. Additionally, students with disabilities account for the vast majority of students restrained or secluded in schools. In fact, the report found that children served by the federal special education law, IDEA, represented 71% of those restrained and 66% of students subjected to seclusion. All of this is to say that a district policy that criminalizes age-appropriate, nonviolent behavior of elementary students is troubling for my husband and me, and the fact that students with disabilities are statistically more likely to be victimized by these policies concerns us greatly. We will not allow our daughter to be part of these statistics. What is also troubling to us is how the TE staff and administration chose to interpret the policy in the strictest possible way without any consideration for the fact that Margot is a kindergarten student and that she has a disability. The district staff and administration, including Becky Wills, Chris Grapi, Ellen Turk, and Mark Cataldi, had more than 24 hours to consider and discuss our concerns, and yet they chose to involve the police for a kindergartner making a threat with a finger. My husband and I are here tonight to ask the committee to clarify policy 5401, which deals with threat assessment, to ensure there is an appropriate response to perceived threats so that school officials are not overreporting minor disciplinary issues to law enforcement. We also ask that the board explicitly spell out in a decision tree, as is recommended by the University of Virginia's framework, how administrators and staff are expected to respond and assess threatening comments and situations. And we ask that the policy require school officials to consider the age and developmental appropriateness of any action they take or report, as well as a student's disability, rather than blindly following a policy that I believe even they know goes too far. Thank you.
Mrs. Gaines, thank you for articulating your concerns. They are both valid and heard, so I want me to know that. Mr. Grapi, can you give some context or...
Yeah, I could certainly do that. I also, I hear your concerns, and certainly there was time that there was a discussion about it, and certainly we don't want to talk about it without any, of course, due situation, but I do want to acknowledge that, and I'd be happy to provide additional information and background. So, it is written in the policy as part of the threat assessment team that we have implemented threat assessment teams at each of our schools and consult with law enforcement. It's written in that way, it says consult with law enforcement. And the background on that is when we were going through that policy and regulation revision area, we had done parent groups, we did research, we contacted experts, we got legal opinion, we looked at other school districts' information about the policies and regulations they had in place, and you're correct, Dr. Dewey Cornell out of UVA, it was certainly a model. When you talk to other experts and you do a legal review of other districts, we found didn't have a lot, but some did across the nation, kept carrying that in over and over again. So certainly, we did pull in a lot of things that were based out of the University of Virginia. And in fact, in the UVA model, Dr. Dewey Cornell in that, in the setup of threat assessment team, mentions having a law enforcement on the actual team. So the reason why the draft, which was then finally approved, was written as consult with law enforcement is because when we were writing that, we didn't, at least from my perspective in writing it, as a board, I thought it was very difficult to require a separate entity to have their personnel on a threat assessment. So in other words, I found it difficult to write, "The school board policy in 5401 requires that a law enforcement official be on the threat assessment." So rather than write it that way, we said consult with law enforcement because it followed the model from UVA to its heart. And that was meant to be going through that process, if there's any determination that there was a threat, whether it be transient or substantive, it was contact law enforcement because they need to be informed and to work with it. Furthermore, written into school code and related to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, it says that each threat assessment team should include other school staff or community resources who serve as regular team members or be consulted during the threat assessment process as appropriate and as determined necessary by the team, including law enforcement agency representations. So, we feel that also aligns with our, the policy that you have, we're talking about right now, that talks about consulting with law enforcement. There's also in a reference that came out a couple summers ago from the U.S. Secret Service and the United States Department of Education, also mentions a reference to having law enforcement involved in the threat assessment process. So certainly, the process was meant to be uniform. It can be challenging, and we certainly can hear individual cases and look at background, but the process is meant to be uniform so that we're trying to seek out others that have, that could have information that we may not know about, that could help inform us as we move forward with that individual client. Certainly, we want to take the developmental age of any student, any needs that the students have, but at the same time, from my point of view, we look at it as more as partnering with law enforcement, and if law enforcement added the additional information that could help us or have them respond in a certain way, then we feel like we need, they need to be.
Could you speak briefly to what governs our relationship with law enforcement, is that memorandum of understanding, is that, any little grievance?
We do, we do have a current memorandum of understanding with the local police departments. That's mandated by law that we have those, and the ones that we have in place have to be renewed every two years. We just recently redid those. And those MOUs, there are state templates that you can use as a district. So, one of the things when we had to renew, we worked with our legal representation to review that, and if there are any changes that a district would like to make to the state mandate, state template, you have to inform the state and let them know and have some kind of approval process. After reviewing it, us reading it, legal reading it, we thought, you know, there's everything in there, we don't need to change anything, we'll go with the state template and therefore work with our police departments and sign. So, those are in place, the state template, there were no changes that we did on our recap in there, and there's no true reference to this type of, there's not a true reference to all threats that are related, that are in that MOU. This situation with threat assessment was guided by our policy 5401, which is what I just spoke about, the procedures that are outlined.
Before we reach our public comment, is there any other questions?
So in 5401, is there a definition of what a consultation is? Because to me, that is just, you know, letting the police know what happened versus an actual report being filed. So we think the consultation happened first before a report is filed, especially in the case that we just heard, you would think like they were told what had happened and said, you know, we agree with the threat assessment team, the principal and the teacher, or something, it was a transient threat. So is that clearly defined what a consultation is?
Consult does not, does not have a separate definition in that policy. Certainly, the committee would like to see that, that we could work on that. Also think, we're more than happy to talk with our police departments, but if they have procedures they need to follow, I guess they're going to follow their procedures. We could certainly, from our point of view, say it's truly meant as a consult, that's always meant. And we emphasize that with our administrative, you know, we're not calling to say we want to file a police report. We're calling because we're going through a threat assessment process and we want to consult with you. And what the police do, we can talk with them, but I don't know, they might have internal procedures that they have to follow and they have to say, "Well, I can write consult down, but I still have to take information, I'm unsure." They don't have procedures, I'm sure they need.
So there's, there's nothing in the memorandum in the way with the police department that talks about, provides for informal consultation or something along those lines that allows some flexibility in that, in that regard?
There is, to my recollection in the MOU, there is a reference to terroristic threats, which by definition I'm going on would be a different level of threats than an individual threat. And once again, using our, our model, transient versus substantive, but the MOU does mention terroristic threats from the state template, so that's, that's, you have, you have options to report that or not. You have options in the MOU to report terroristic threats. I, I believe the state template is behind that, and I think we might be seeing changes because once again, there's other references at, at the state level that talk about having law enforcement involved. I can't say that for sure, I don't know what they're going to do, but I wouldn't be surprised if we do see that happen. That no longer is optional to report terroristic threats.
But other than that, there's nothing that, there's nothing that governs the police department's processes when it comes to this type of consultation that at least is now integrated into our policy. I'm surprised.
There's language in there about speaking for disabilities and giving consideration for that, but not necessarily...
With the, with the, with the police, with the MOU?
In the MOU. We also have language in our policy and regulation, which related to that as well. But not necessarily defining what a consultation is or how they handle things or...
At the end of the day, there's very little that we can do to help. I, I understand that, and so that's what I, that's, well, at least currently, there's very little that we can, we can do on that point. This is, this is, if we're, if the policy is, at the heart of the policy in terms of threat assessment and consulting with law enforcement is concerned with an idea towards cooperation and working with them on a, on a partner-like basis in a reasonable way. And, but our, we have to have, we have to have two sides to be able to do that, and if we know and if we can't get, come to some sort of arrangement with our local police department that is, allows for these sorts of scenarios to be less formal and official like it sounds like this one was, then it strikes me that that's a, that puts us in, that puts us in a difficult spot. And if we want, if we truly want to partner with our local law enforcement, then there has to be some sort of flexibility and understanding on their part as well. And so, if we're going to be in a situation where the department, if the police department and our local law enforcement is not going to be in a position to be able to tell us, "Well, look, you can't come to us and informally consult, and we're not going to write up this report," then that's going to require, at least in my view, that necessitates us to review, re-review our policy to allow more discretion on the part of our own vote to be able to decide when they're going to consult or not with, with local law enforcement. So I'm exploring those things because I appreciate that we want to be able to provide this, apply this policy in a uniform way. We went through a long period of focus groups and research, and it's difficult to make exceptions on a case-by, on a case-by-case basis, and that was certainly one of the things that came out of this is that, look, you just, we have to, this has to be applied in a uniform, in a uniform way. But if applying it in a uniform way results in these sort, engenders these sorts of results, I think we do, and because, and because we can't find a partner in law enforcement that will allow us to consult on a more cooperative and informal basis, then that I think incumbent upon us to reexamine the policy and the practices on either policy so that we don't end up with these issues because frankly, I mean, I, and look, I mean, I understand that there are context around this, but on its face, this sounds, you know, it sounds a bit like over.
Sue, did you have any questions?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
She said...
I said, actually, this can be into our safe cover, my...
Sue. Is there anything new that anybody wanted to?
Just a question about what happens to that information that's given to the police and if there's a record, is that publicly available? Is there, I know there are issues that we can, we can give information to somebody like the police in the best interest of the district, but does it, is it protected because they're minors or is it...
I don't, I don't necessarily know what the police officer meant when he said that's a college interview, of your own police records. I would tell you though, we're required to report certain level of student matters to the state in a anonymous, confidential way that talks about, what are certain things, and certainly threats would be one of them, and it relates to state reportable, they call it disciplinary, but I'm avoiding that because I don't want to suggest that every time we have one of these, there's actually a disciplinary consequence because those things are separate. We take a look at the whole thing and determine what, if any, consequences of discipline should be, what education, what support, et cetera. But we're... But we're required to report those. At the end of the school year, they get sent to the state, and that isn't public, publicly accessible. But once again, it's anonymous, you know, there's no student names associated with it, but we have, we do have to report, we're required to do a certain level of disciplinary matters. I don't know if that's what he meant by it, or if there's, if they have a request that they have to release it somehow. I don't really know how that relates to a police report. Once again, we're looking at it as a consult.
All right, question?
So is there a possibility of us bringing that policy back forward again to take a look at this decision tree? I think what I've asked her was, do you think the decision tree is assessed as a transient threat? And maybe we need to evaluate, have a discussion around whether it's a transient threat. So it's applying people and preparing them, it has to be uniformly applied. So when it's a transient threat, maybe in that decision tree, as long as it doesn't violate any of the new or whatever state templates for the police, that we are able to do it by grade level as well as considering whether the child has an IEP, about minimum, you know, age appropriate, those types of things. I know, look, I went through that whole focus group thing last year as an observer, and I understand what feedback, what we got, and I think there may need to be possible reexamination. I can report it to my colleagues, I'll take some time to...
So to Todd's point and all of that, it seems like there needs to be some alignment of the policy with the police practice. That's, I think that's where the disconnect seems to be. Because what we're hearing is there's no guarantee, if we follow whatever policy we have, that the police aren't going to somehow overreach. So...
Excuse me?
We're going to let them respond first, and then we'll go back to the public.
I guess I just want to say, in our estimation, I do have to say, I don't think I've heard of a case where we have felt the police have done something that we wouldn't have agreed for. So I guess we're looking at it as a consult, I guess, and that's where I'm saying, I don't know what their internal procedures are. We're not trying to generate some, you know, we're not filing a police report. But at the same time, I certainly don't want anybody to walk away, at least from our point of view, thinking, any of our police departments, we feel, has done anything to... Like, then, I guess, depending on what officer maybe was taking the information. And I have, I want to give an example of why that might be important. Because you get one officer who takes, who might take information, and once again, a consult is meant to be, are there other things that might be of concern in a uniform way? So if they don't, they need the information, so they can go back to probably check and see, is there any history to this? So I'll make up a history not related to anything, anything here or anything that I know about. I'll completely make one up. And if we were to share information, even if it's a transient threat, and we come to the police, and they have knowledge that, oh yeah, this past summer, I was at that house because the student had a BB gun and was shooting the neighbor's dog, or had an airsoft rifle, or I know the parents, you know, have a right to weapons, and we had to address that issue to them. Those are the things we wouldn't necessarily know, but the police might have information to say, I think at least we need to take further action because there's a different level of concern. So that, I think that's the part where just uniformly, we're trying to make sure, as the model suggests, we don't have all the information. We want to work with parents through these things, they're very challenging. We get it, and we want to, we want to work with law enforcement to make sure that all things are being considered. We're not, we're not looking to brand anybody or make them feel worse. If they have to go through a process, then they want to help support that process.
Well, you were starting to elaborate on that. So we can certainly engage with the police departments, two departments, about what they might do with information. But you were getting at what some of the, part of it is, is concept, but one of the challenges threat assessment teams, the inclusion of police was trying to overcome, was the idea that when past incidents were looked at that were significant, if the people had information inside of them, and that if different individuals within organizations and across organizations shared the information that they had, maybe some decision would have been reached differently. So we might, from our standpoint, see something as a transient threat. But as Mark said, there could be more to the story than we don't have, so sort of sharing would take those. That makes sense to me. I also then know that the police would have some protocols as to what they might do when they receive that information because, as was pointed out, a different officer might take the call the next time. How do you know, how do you know that the whole story is known by the individuals? So I understand the spirit of that, but I can also understand in individual situations, when someone sees something play out in school and say, why would that play out to the level that the police would need to be informed? So we certainly can engage in conversation with the police with what happens, with that information most of sharing. As a start, bring the policy back. Is there additional information you would like us to bring back to the committee with that?
Committee? Sue?
I think it certainly deserves a look again in this idea of a decision tree. Could perhaps help both the administration, and I appreciate that the administrators were following the policy as we would want them to follow any policy. But perhaps the, now that we have that in place and we've got the experience like this one, we could help families and administrators and people involved in working through these things by giving them a way that, you know, they can look at it, look at the developmental place of the child and any other extenuating factors to try to mitigate the number of things that we needed called a council. Without, the code says we need to, when we have a threat of a certain amount, we have to follow the school code. I'm not saying we shouldn't, but I just wonder if we could look at it again with something like this in mind, and I appreciate being aware of it, so that perhaps we can have a similar experience in the future.
Sue? As a recommendation, it sounds like you want to review the policy again. We also want to engage in a little more conversation with our law enforcement partners. To that, to that point, just to wrap this up, I hope you leave all the public comment. In my conversations with our administration and others, I think other, people on the table can attest that I frequently brought up this issue of how we engage police. There are certain populations that are particularly susceptible to overreach by law enforcement. Disability community being one, minority community being another. As a personal testimonial, not to quantify any suffering or anything, but just to tell you why these things matter so much to me. On my way home Sunday night, I was stopped by a state trooper and let go. Why was I stopped? Who knows? But because of these experiences, such things matter a lot to me deeply. I think Mark and Rich in particular know that, I've brought this up a lot. So please know your concern, as I said before, is valid, it's heard. I wanted to make sure that we could have a conversation about it for a few minutes, but we'll bring that policy back for review. We'll think through our relationship with law enforcement, have those conversations, and have this discussion here.
Can I just come along and follow your statements, how did you sit past, what else should I write forward? I know when we're looking at this model, there has been some discussions about it. I don't know if there have been more articles or research now. It's my understanding this model was really developed for secondary education. So high school and college threat assessment and protocols. So I'm wondering if there's been any further, if there's easily accessible articles that have taken this research of this model to kind of show how it's been reapplied or differentiated in that decision tree, maybe for middle school age and elementary school age. I think that might be helpful for the community themselves to see if there's something else out there that follows this same UVA development, but has changed to a little bit more, has more age appropriate.
So you'll come back with any additional other information? Mrs. Gaines, does that sound like a reasonable background?
Actually, I think that more needs to be done. Because first of all, as I'm listening to this discussion, and my husband has something to say as well, but I just want to point out, this isn't a matter of the police taking the information and acting differently, right? The whole fact of the matter is, is that if you look at the UVA model, right? When there is a transient threat made, and I would argue that this wasn't even a threat. If someone barely has the language to understand what they're saying, how could it be a threat? And that is exactly what the IEP determined, it is exactly what the principal determined in discussing this with my daughter. So in that instance, even if it's a transient threat, right? That means that there's no threat, right? There is no need to then involve law enforcement. In terms of your consult, when you look at the UVA model, what they actually recommend about having law enforcement on the threat assessment team is that there are some districts that actually have school safety officers within the school. That's who they're recommending be on the team, right? So it's not a matter of, the whole point is that you are, whether you want to believe it or not, there's no consultation going on. The threat assessment team already met, they already determined it was not substantive. There's nothing for the police department to add, that's exactly what the officer told me. And all that they're doing is recording that. And you may think that that doesn't matter, but it does. Because I don't want the police to have information about me, or you, or anyone, right? That is not their role to be taking information about innocent people who haven't done anything wrong. Correct? In terms of the data, it is publicly available. You can go to the police station and you can look it up. Her name may be redacted, but they have my name, my address, her age. It's not very difficult to figure out who she is. So in that context, the idea of anonymous data is a fallacy. If you have looked at the news at all about all the information that social media is collecting about you, none of that data is really anonymized. Everyone can figure out who you are. This information is sitting in a database, and I don't know if it's going to be brought up again when she's in middle school and something happens to either change her placement in education, to restrain her, to justify that. It is inappropriate and dangerous for our police department and local law enforcement to be collecting data about our children. And if you can't see that, then I think that's problematic at a fundamental level in terms of what we're discussing here, in terms of what we think is actually threatening for our children. And if you often look at the data, the zero policy, zero tolerance policies that this really amounts to, there's plenty of data to show that it's ineffective, that it doesn't stop the violence that we're trying to stop. I mean, what is the goal that we're trying to achieve here, right? That we don't have someone come into our school and shoot other students or cause any harm. Look at my six-year-old daughter with Down syndrome. Do you honestly think that she presents a threat to our school or our community? No, I don't. It was inappropriate. There needs to be, and I believe that there is, if you look, and my husband will speak to this, to what the state requires, that there already is discretion for administrators and even teachers to determine whether to escalate what they consider a threat. All I'm asking is to use common sense and to use your brain. If everything is a threat, then nothing is a threat, right? Everything doesn't need to go to the police. That is the point. So your suggestion, I'm not entirely satisfied, I would say no.
Well, we're going to review, we're going to review the policy.
Absolutely.
We're going to review the policy.
Yes, and I would suggest that if you're going to implement a model like the UVA model, that you actually implement, and that you actually train people on how to use that model. And I will let my husband say a few words because he's not as emotional as I am.
Just by way of background, I do threat and risk assessment education for the national corporation, and we implement threat policy procedures in some response plans and things as in this, as in that. I'm a team that does this. So I went and I printed out, I wrote all of the laws and policies and risk assessment methodologies that we've been speaking about today, and which guided policy to fill over. I mean, I could go on for hours, but I want to keep it short. So the way I see it, and it's pretty clear from all of the guiding documents that inform this policy, is that these all make a differentiation between substantive and a transient threat. Nowhere in here is that distinction made. Both of the things are defined on the first page, and then never to be spoken of again in this policy. As the way I said, the way this policy is written, applicable to everything, every threat, anything that some administration staff member decides is, should be escalated, is escalated and treated as a substantive threat. And so I have here also the UVA comprehensive school threat assessment guidelines, and the decision tree that they, that our threat assessment team was trained to follow. So if I apply this to our case and apply, and just to put that a bit, how the Witzky described here in some quality, I see that in our case, if we follow these steps as they are documented here, there are five steps. For step one is to evaluate the threat, that's right, good. Step two is to come to resolve the threat as transient, that was not. This then says, and a little bit further, you know, the case is resolved, says literally the case is resolved. However, the way this policy is implemented, and the way it was implemented in Margot's case, is it went straight to step, step one, step two did not exit here, went to step three, was the truth is at the second. It is not until step four of this, so if you get past one, two, and three, that's where it actually misses law enforcement, step four. So how this policy and this methodology and everything used in it requires the involvement of law enforcement for every case, when most cases are actually, as in here, step two, all they go all the way to something before, and if the case makes. I don't understand how that implementation derives from this decision tree as documented in the training which the threat assessment team says they took. So, you know, I'd be talking about, you know, how the next steps. I don't know how this whole process goes. I don't know how you guys evaluate and write new policies. I've written policies like this, and I would be happy to sit down with whoever does this and go through this. It's actually not really that hard. I read the 70 pages or whatever it's got here, which is pretty simple. I could, I could have written it, or I could draft, like, hey, like, check this out. This is like, you know, the way you could easily do it. It's not that, it's not like it's rocket science. Because the guiding documents are actually pretty good. Like, if you could pull them all together, you could follow the law, you could follow the threat assessment model, and come up with a policy that is reasonable and does what we claim to be doing. and does what we claim to be doing, or claim to want to do. All of it, it all combines with the laws, regulations, and measure the policy that we come up with. So if anybody wants to chat about this stuff, I've got a hearing afterward, but really that's where, you know, the fundamental issue is with this policy, is that it makes a difference between there, and then from there, there's no guidance, like, because there's no differentiation between the types of threats, there's no guidance at hand, everything automatically follows that entire tree all the way down to the end, as if you might start a block into the, into the school with a handgun and start shooting. So, yeah, I don't know off the rails, but.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate your comments, and we're gonna bring that back for review. And we welcome your input, Mrs. Gaines, and Mrs. Gaines, your feedback here.
So I spent the afternoon at the Tricor and Police Department, trying to learn more about this policy and how it's applied in the district. And they were really kind, and spent a lot of time with me, and they called me back a little while later and got me the memo of understanding.
Can you just state your name, Jamie?
Jamie Lynch.
Thank you.
So, so writing the memo of understanding, there already is discretion for all of this. There's, it says, "The school entity may notify the law enforcement authority having jurisdiction where the incident occurred of any of the following incidents." And, and it talks about simple assault, reckless endangerment, harassment, decent exposure, blah, 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 goes on. It says, "In exercising its discretion to determine whether to notify law enforcement of such incidents, the school entity may consider the following factors: the seriousness of the situation, the school's ability to diffuse or resolve the situation, the child's intent, the child's age, whether the student has a disability, and if so, the type of disability, and its impact on the student's behavior, and other factors believed to be relevant." And, and when I talked to the police, they said today, "We don't look at this as consultation. This is something that was guided that the district and their table of police together sat down and did this memo of understanding. They are not dictating our practices." They said they took the State Tepes template off the PBE website, and they used that. He said, "When they get a report, and it's already been deemed to be transient, and they, the school has solved it, there's simply a secretary keeping alive," which is what we're talking about. And they write all the information down, and they write down, you know, what the school said they did, and that's it. You know, parents aren't notified, that the police were notified. I don't know if the district notifies the police.
I think the other thing to consider in here is, there's no context to the situation when that information is taken down. There's no context that Margot has Down syndrome, that she didn't know what she was saying. So again, if someone were to come to this when she is 13, 14, maybe 18, 19, 20, right? All people are gonna see is that she made a threat when she was in kindergarten. That's it.
I'm reading a statement from, my name is Kate Mayer, I'm a build officer, and I'm reading a statement from Kate Murphy, who was on the policy committee when this policy was written. She said, "Good evening, policy committee members, I'm sorry I cannot be here tonight to talk about this, today is my son Billy's eighth birthday. When we revised policy 5401 and reviewed the accompanying administrative regulation, we didn't discuss a situation like this. Many of our changes and revisions were driven by events that occurred in our middle schools or high school and not in our elementary schools. It wasn't my intent to notify the police or create a record with local law enforcement when an elementary-aged child made what our trained threat assessment team determined to be a transient threat. Knowing now how this policy is enforced, please ask if this is your intent. Does it make sense to notify local law enforcement every time an elementary-aged student makes a non-substantive threat out of anger or frustration? If this isn't your intent, please clarify the language in policy 5401, and ask the administration to do the same in their accompanying regulation. Thank you." And I'm just going to say something, as a build leader, a parent in the district, I also have a first-grade child who had the police call upon them a couple of years ago after we had a public event here at the, at the administrative office. Someone spoke publicly about dyslexia, and the next week, my first grader was suspended, and the police were called on her. And we had to engage a lawyer to get through the process because the actual policy wasn't followed according to her. Now, my daughter is not special needs, she does not have an IEP, she is a neurotypical child who had never been in any trouble at all prior to that. It was a very emotional time for our family, primarily because we were not consulted. Our daughter was interviewed three times by the principal and the counselor prior to us being notified. The classroom where the alleged threat, which was never substantiated, happened, her first grade classroom, with her first grade teacher, her teacher was never consulted. Her teacher did not know, after three days of interviews, after this entire process with my seven-year-old child, we were not notified, her teacher was not notified, no one was notified except for the principal and the school council. My daughter made a mistake for sure, she was not, had never done anything like that before, she also has a record. So I want to let you know that this is not something that is happening, happening one off. It's definitely happened probably to more members of the build team, if you want to talk to them privately, but with our early elementary school students. And I would appreciate reconsidering, especially looking at the age of the student, the intent, the, you know, the background in terms of prior incidents, and then also consider, as Kyle said, that labeling children for things like drawing guns on papers, or sticking their finger up, or saying "I hate you" at the ages of six, seven, eight, it can be a really, really slippery slope. And I appreciate your time, thank you.
Hey. Well, I'll keep this short because I do think all the board members get it here, and I appreciate your early comments and support of the people here, and willingness to look into this policy. But a couple of things that I think are, one thing is, that is pretty obvious, as we call it a law, resipso liquidware, right? This is a pretty obvious situation, and I think this has gone a bit too far, you know, to say the least. Second, I think there's got to be a restorative principle here, if there really is some sort of, you know, police record or something there, maybe somebody should make a call and see if that can be dealt with, you know, because I just think resipso liquidware, it's, you know, just doesn't sound right to me that this young child, you know, with her issues, you know, and the family has to deal with this. I think it's very sympathetic, and I think, you know, obviously, this was not the intent of what we wanted to do in the policy committee. Now, I think it's very pertinent, what Jamie said about the memo of understanding, right? Because the memo of understanding seems like it would handle this, because the discretionary sort of issue is, the school entity may notify the law enforcement authority, if there's any of the following offenses, and one of which is Section 2706 relating to terroristic threats. So if that policy was followed, there would be discretion not to report it, right? Then you go down to, what are the factors in determining the discretion? Well, seriousness of the situation, the school's ability to diffuse or resolve the situation, the child's intent, the child's age, whether the student has a disability, and if so, the type of disability and its impact on the student's behavior, and other factors believed to be relevant. Well, I mean, you could just go through each and every one of those factors, check them off, and say, well, this is what applies here, you know? So maybe our policy isn't consistent with the memo of understanding, it has to be resolved, but maybe it could have been handled at the memo of understanding level, I'm not sure. I don't know about the vastest situation, but it appears that this is the memo of understanding that would be out of our law enforcement, local law enforcement team.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes.
I just wanted to ask, on our current policy, Mark, since you were probably the one who ultimately was the enforcer here, was there 100% no wiggle room? 100% no wiggle room in calling the police?
I'll just step back to your first statement. Yes, I was very involved because I was, that was part of my work. What you're referencing is a board policy which was discussed publicly with the board, along with the administrative regulation.
So the way, so I guess...
So I'm the liaison, administrative liaison to policy. So if that's what you meant, I'll take it for that.
Yeah, that is right.
I want to make sure you put it in a big, big context, so it's not Mark and Tyler's policy.
I understand that.
So what I'm saying is, the DuVic Cornell model, on the threat assessment team, it says have law enforcement on the team.
It says that's an option. It doesn't say that you must.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I have to look at the wording, I don't, I don't believe that's not, I don't believe that's the word. It says law enforcement should be on. And so we knew, we knew that would be a challenge, once again, we don't have a school resource officer that we have control over, we don't truly have control to say, "Police department, you have to assign an officer or officers to our threat assessment team." So that's why it was written as a consult, so that we would be getting that part to follow them on.
Wendy, does that answer your question?
Almost.
Okay.
So I guess my statement is, I'm just looking for clarification from the policy committee, that the current policy today has zero wiggle room, has zero ability to give any leniency or to give any discretion that this was happening to a six-year-old who's in kindergarten. So if you guys could clarify that, that would be wonderful.
I appreciate the question, Wendy. I think we would be in error to state conclusively that, which is why we want to bring it back for full review and do what we do due diligence, we'll get it, in light of your feedback, which is valid and very important. I work at a building with a school resource officer, so I'm going to be looking at it in that light. So I appreciate the conversation. To Michelle's point, we're going to take into account the level of the student and additional information. We're going to have a full discussion, which you all are invited to, about it, and hopefully we'll fix the situation. I think everyone around the table agrees that what happened to the Gaines family with Margot should not have happened, it certainly wasn't my intent when I voted for, what I voted for. So yes, one last public comment.
Yes, can I just ask too?
Yes.
I would ask the board to ask the administration to provide you with data on the number of times that they have had to call, or that they have consulted with local law enforcement, particularly for elementary school students? I think that that's important. I also would say that if it is very important for our district to have law enforcement be part of the threat assessment team, which by the way, if you actually read the UVA model, it's a recommendation, it doesn't say that, that law enforcement must be part of the threat assessment team, but if that is very important, then maybe the TE district should consider hiring a school safety officer to be put onto the committee, because that, right there, would not unnecessarily generate what amounts to police reports for students.
I think that's a valid point. I think we have a path forward.
I just wanted to say one more thing.
One last thing, Dan.
Because I do think, I do think there currently is some discretion in the policy, I don't think it's completely written that this had to occur. And so maybe that's something that could be even discussed for you guys before you meet again as a policy. The policy 5401 says violations of this policy and the accompanying administrative regulations shall be recorded to local law enforcement in accordance with the MOU. So, and the MOU very clearly defines where the flexibility is. So I think it's, perhaps it's more a conversation of what's happening in practice in the district.
I think we're gonna get an update from it for it, but I, we're not gonna have that discussion right now.
And I will just add to the data piece, when I spoke to the township, to the police department this afternoon, they told me the great majority of their calls are at the middle school. So, you know, I don't, I didn't ask for the numbers today, and I don't know if they would provide them, I would hope they won't, but I think it would be a really important thing for, for people to know and to understand.
Thank you. And thank you for all public comment. We're gonna move on to policies for second reading, starting with 4320, tobacco smoking products and electronic smoking products. Mr. Toldy, please give us.
Okay, if it would be okay, I'd like to lump together 4320 and 5411, please, because they're both related. This is, we're presenting it to the committee on a second reading consideration. The origination of this was to really take a look at what the policy covered. It had been several years, at least for 2013 for 4320, and 2013 for 5411 as well. So we've redefined what it means, we've re-titled the policies, policy and regulations, what tobacco product means, and how really, if I could point out particularly vaping in 5411 and that regulation, we wanted to take a look at the procedures, because vaping was had been identified as a concern within our schools, mainly the high school, but, you know, we've, we had some cases at the middle school as well, and believe, as we've heard from across the county, across the state, across the nation, this concern with vaping has grown to a concerning level. So we did write into the regulation the change in those procedures related to an additional vape educate program. Once again, we cover it in our curriculum, but for anybody who violates it, we instituted a vape educate program to provide additional counseling and additional educational component to do that. And that's really the summary of why we're looking to change the policy and regulations 4320 and 5411.
Comments or questions from the committee?
All right, seeing now, I think we can recommend it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Policy reg 8070, surveillance, monitoring in schools, on school buses.
Okay, so one of the areas of policy and regulation that we want to identify, a chance to review and revise as needed, is related to safety, and this one certainly came up related to safety, monitoring, monitoring devices in our schools and on school buses. And we were also undergoing a update to our system that's been done at the high school now, and we have plans for the middle school and elementary to, as that, as that project continues, that's been run through the facility committee, so we wanted to look at it through that lens as well, unattended. And so we did this one for a first reading already, so it outlines the process and tries to make it very explicit about recording devices, the signage that goes along in the schools and on school buses, and then procedures that would be in place for any review, reviewing of the recording devices.
Me?
All right, recommend for full board.
Thank you.
No information, follow-up from previous committee? Did we, oh, there is one sticking at the bottom there, I'm sorry.
Hopefully a quick one.
9140, board committees.
Okay, after a conversation, the committee recommended a board policy in the board, in the board section of the policies, that the personnel standing committee be removed, and so that went for a first reading already, that's the only change in reviewing this policy that we present on a second reading consideration.
And that would be issued. Anyone else? Board? Seeing now we can recommend. All right, now on to follow-up from our previous meeting. Forty-three fifty, health and safety in the workplace. Mr. Todd.
This policy does not have an accompanying regulation. That's why you do not see it in front of you. The policy is being recommended for repeal, uh, for repeal. Faced upon the fact that we have taken a more comprehensive look at policy and regulation eighty-fourty with safety and feel like the content in forty-three fifty will no longer be needed, really pending the change to eighty-fourty. If you would like me to get into eighty-fourty to give you a better context or consideration of the repeal, you could certainly do that. Yes? Okay, so, um, you will notice significant revisions to policy, policy and regulation eighty-fourty. And once again, really, the, the thinking behind this was to take a more holistic approach with safety and security and thus the re, the retitling of the policy and regulation. Because the previous policy mainly focused, obviously, on just emergency procedures and preparedness. We felt like it was best to make sure that we were communicating all aspects, all major aspects of our safety program, our comprehensive safety program across the district. In addition, as you know, the state requires that each school, district have a school safety and security coordinator name as one, as an administrator in their district. So that really, that part of it is rooted more into the school code and what's required there. We do have a separate regulation for the job responsibilities for that position that we now have full-time in place. And so really, the, the length and the categorization is meant to, maybe a little different than what you've seen in some other policies and regulations, but really was tried to, meant to really try to capture all the major facets of our safety program and at least give a little bit of a description so that if someone's looking, they could easily find the comprehensive nature of what we have.
Questions, comments from the committee?
Are we, are we talking about them all as a whole, including the policy and the, and the reg?
Yeah.
So I, I had, I had a question about the, I mean, the, the policy I thought was, was fine. And it seemed to express what, what you said it did, and so does the, the regulation in large part, although the regulation is long and incomprehensive and almost, and it struck me, it read more like a points of informational document as opposed to a regulation that's supposed to govern the the actions of the district in certain instances. I mean, we have, for example, there's, there's an entire section entitled procedures for parents or guardians to follow during emergency situations. And the question whether regulation that applies to the district can say, this is what parents and guardians are supposed to do during, during regulations, during emergency situations, as opposed to what the district is supposed to do in terms of informing parents or the standard that are going to be applied to, to district personnel. And then even in that, within that section, there are things that talk about what the emergency responders are going to do and then what parents and guardians should ensure. And so it should ensure that the district has their most up-to-date. And typically, I mean, you can correct me here if I'm wrong about this, but typically the regulations govern what district personnel are supposed to be doing. I mean, and they may set up programs that require, you know, certain parent involvement or certain things, or say, you know, here's our, here's our thing you need to provide us. But usually doesn't, they usually don't dictate what it is that, you know, parents need to be, parents need to be doing or, or people other than district personnel need to be doing. In addition, there's a section on preparing for emergency situation, routine drills, which is fine, although it's oddly, not oddly, it's, it's very specific in terms of saying, you know, this is, this is what this drill involves and you're going to, you know, you're going to close the doors, turn off the lights, those sorts of things. And again, that seems to be, to me, more of a, struck me as more of a informational thing, a practice, so to speak, or something, informational item that when we're put out as opposed to a regulation that is applicable to, to, to district personnel. So it's a whole big preface to say, you know, sort of, was there a model off of which this was, the regulation at least was based, or is it trying to fulfill? Because I understand also there sometimes when we do stuff and we have stuff in a regulation or even in a policy, that I look down and go, gosh. But, you know, you'll tell me, well, this is what school code says. You have, you have to say this, this, that, and the other thing. And I go, okay, well, then that's what we have to do. So I'm wondering whether there's a, a, a model for this or a basis or something that, that is requiring us to be this extensive and detailed in the reg as we are.
Do you want to answer the, the legal one?
Sure. In terms of what is required by law, the specific templates here and the structure is not driven by any legal requirements. So the extent to which detail is included or not included and the way in which the regulation is ultimately structured is for committee to decide as it sees fit. I, I think there are policies that, Mr. King, towards it to your point, a lot of times the, the regulation does speak to what school officials are going to do or if you look at the human resources section of the manual, it talks about what employees are supposed to do. But there are times, the student section of the manual generally talks about expectations of students. The community section of the manual may talk about things that we expect of community members when they come onto our property, how they're supposed to conduct themselves. If you want to be a volunteer or visitor in our school, the things that you have to agree to do. So I think the goal when we created this, and I've seen a lot of other school districts in the area move in this direction, frequently getting a lot of questions with today's environment, the schools operating out. Well, what, what are you doing to ensure safety? What are, what are all the moving pieces and what are, instead of operating in silos, what are all aspects of the institution doing and what are they expected to do? And so from a transparency standpoint, I think when we built the AR, we were trying to focus on all of the players that it takes to ensure a safe school environment and outline what we're doing and what the expectations are, are, are all of those people. So sometimes it is our security guards, our assessment teams, our counselors, our psychologists. But you are correct, sometimes there are references to students reporting conduct, parents reporting conduct, what parents are expected to do in, in the course of an emergency. It was done by design, but it doesn't need to be done that way. That's not the way we're speaking, you know, like.
Tina or Sue?
Uh, well, my, my question was what, on page five, what Todd had pointed out about procedures for parents and guardians. And I was just wondering, is that written anywhere else for parents and guardians to know what they're to do? I'm just thinking of myself as a parent, like I never would have found that and where to look for that, you know, and it's.
I'll defer to the admin team on that, but generally in emergency situations, you are communicating in all ways possible. So whether it be through internet or robo-calls, I think this language generally tracks what would be on the website, on the telephone, during times of need. But I'm not sure that this is communicated how regularly that would be the question for.
I actually thought, um, having it here would be a first step in making sure parents could all get the same information if there were an emergency, because we could use it then this as a template in parent communications at the beginning of the year or in handbooks. If, if this was set out in the regulation as sort of the format for all schools and all emergencies and it, it's sort of a baseline for parents to understand. And in the end, in an emergency, as you say, everyone uses every possible way of communicating to parents and, and parents aren't going to go looking up an administrative regulation. But to read it when, before there's an emergency, and hopefully there never is one when you need it, gives everyone a chance maybe to think about that.
No, I think that's fair. So you're saying it's not necessarily inappropriate placed here, but it has to be displayed somewhere else. I, I would say though, I don't, I don't know. I have a little issue with the title here. I don't know if we should title it that, you know, regulation. To Todd's point, that particular section? Yeah.
Guidelines?
I, I, yeah, I agree with him on, you know, stating something for a parent in the regulation.
Yeah, that, that just, okay, so that section in particular, not, not to title the whole thing.
But I, I mean, I tend to agree with what Sue was saying.
In other words, you think maybe a word like guidelines, does, does it sound too prescriptive to you? Like, is that what you?
It, so when I look at it, there's nothing that shows me that this is kind of like a template that we're using to give to parents. It just kind of, administrative regulations are, as Todd was saying, things that our administration follows. Doesn't, I don't know how you reconcile that title being in the administrative regulations. Like, how do you regulate what parents are going to do? Other board members?
We'll read in that same section. Um, the last paragraph, which is under what's now titled procedures for parents, guardians, follow during emergency situations. That's the one piece where we are asking for up-to-date contact information. That maybe should be moved to the front to be able to address the parents. We need this so that if an emergency happens, we can do X, Y, Z. But, um, so I would move that forward.
Everybody in the committee okay?
Yes, yeah.
Good suggestion.
Perhaps a good, called guidelines instead of procedures?
I'm, I'm okay with that. Any objection? Other board comment?
I, I mean, this relates to what we were talking about before, and I think it relates to this policy, wanting to see, like, the MOUs that we have, like, the understanding how they're developed. And, and I do think, um, yeah, wanting to see this. When we review the policies. The one before and this one.
Are you suggesting that it be a part of the reg thing?
No, I'm suggesting that when we review, um, the earlier policy that people, fifty-four one, and then this, that we look at the MOUs.
So it seems like this would be particularly relevant to safety things.
Yes.
But assuming that there's nothing confidential and it's not, not public, the suggestion that we also have reference to the MOU when we're reviewing a policy that's relevant to an MOU. Is that reasonable? It seems fair. Fair enough. Any public comment on this? All right, so we're going to take the stone amendment. Todd was watching CNN before I did. Move that paragraph to, to the front. I wasn't pressing. Right? Devastated?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, I, I, I added, because I said, didn't we write something in about the MOU with police departments? It is the last section I read.
I was just saying, to be able to review it.
Yeah, sure. I just.
To have reference to.
I got confused because of like, I thought it was in there, but I couldn't find it right.
So to move on quickly, the two things, we want to move that, move last paragraph under what is currently titled procedures for parents to the front. And TD amendment, which is to change procedures to governance. All right, committee, we good with that? All right.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Please.
So just, so this is, we're in the section of follow-up from previous policy committee meetings. So are we reviewing these for purposes of a first reading? Or are we just reviewing them for, reviewing them?
I believe it's for purposes of a first reading, correct?
Yes, so they, uh, the reason why I put it in that section is they were on the prior agenda, but we never got to them.
Okay.
So it's really just to reflect, we had, we didn't make any changes. If you read it, if anybody from the board or the public read it previously, we just brought it right back to the committee.
Okay.
So we would, uh, we did bring it for consideration for a first reading. If you're ready to move to that. And then, uh, once again, tied to that, if you're okay, to move it to a first reading would be, move forty-three fifty to a first reading on a repeal.
Yes. All right, fifty-four oh-five.
Okay. Once again, related to grouping of policies and regulations that we had planned to get to this year under, or the safety heading is the, the student substance abuse. You see the policy and regulation being presented to you. Bringing it back because we did not get to it at the last meeting either. We'll look at new definitions incorporated into the policy of controlled substance and distribution. Certain things were just changed for readability purposes, better flow. I think a better understanding and clarity. There was some level of repeated nature that we sort of just eliminated with the, the clarification. And I also do just want to make sure I add, and I know I'm dipping into the regulation part of this too. We did not change any of the responses to student substance use or abuse. So you'll see the same level of support, the same level of procedures and disciplinary consequences are carried through. But we did, uh, we, we do want you to know, we looked at that through the administrators who shared with them. I asked them if they thought there was anything different and they thought what we had, had in place seemed to be a, an appropriate level of response for a student found a violation of this policy. Once again, both the, the approach of the support that a student would need, but also the disciplinary consequence for the seriousness of it.
So on page two, where it says responsive school district personnel reporting, can you just add another word to that heading there? Reporting procedures, reporting requirements, maybe reporting procedures.
Reporting procedures?
Yeah. I didn't have anything specific. Wendy? Boyd? Mary Garrett?
So the thing I, I couldn't tell from the policy is, I know we talk about the student assistant program here, but are students who are found to be on the property with a controlled substance, refer to this app team? Is that, is that our, is that what we do? Like, what do we do? Like, what's our, um, like, there's a disciplinary part of it and there's a prevention part of it, but what's the action side of it?
Mary Garrett, you in the policy or the reg?
I'm in the, I'm in the policy. Fifty-four oh-five, and then there's the prevention part.
Prevention, what?
So I'm wondering what's the, so there's definitions, prohibited conduct, response, but it doesn't talk about the response of how we, um, how we support student wellness or whether there's a problem with an emerging substance abuse problem or an existing substance abuse problem.
So I, I think, is what you're looking for, Mary Garrett, maybe in the regulation under student assistance program?
Oh, did I flip a page?
No.
Oh, there it is. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm really embarrassed because I did read this. Okay. Thank you.
Cool.
Really sorry about that.
No, you're good.
I did read it a whole time.
You're good, you're good. Any other policy-related issues? Comment? Questions?
Nope.
So I think we're good to recommend policy fifty-four oh five for a first read?
Yes.
Okay. To the break, is there anything you wanted to say about the break?
Nothing additional.
Todd, did you have something?
Got a couple, couple clarifying points.
Couple?
Um, what a typo. In the, in the student, in the student assistance program, would be added, it should, I think it should be, and to offer a means of intervention.
What's mine?
One, two, third line? Text that's added?
Second paragraph.
Second paragraph?
Into offering means.
Okay, that's mine.
Do you find it one?
My non-substantive.
Second paragraph under student assistance under, under.
Okay, thank you. And then, under, under student seeking help, now this is more of a substitute. We talked about any student who is self-referred always, or is, or who is knowingly referred by anyone else. What does that mean?
Does that mean someone else takes, like, someone else tells the student they're going to refer them, or you should go to this group? If we don't know what it means, then we should fix it?
I have a feeling, but I, like, I wasn't, I didn't issue that word.
I'm not sure.
The student's aware that someone else is going to report that.
Okay, so I guess i- in that context then, if that, if that, is that, is that something though that we should, if the, is that something that's important for this? Because my and all, and I, I won't very lead anymore on this.
Well, so, so the spirit of this one is to exempt the student who is seeking help from the discipline, right? So it's establishing the conditions for what that is because a student can't be, for example, caught under the influence and say, I need help, and then have this apply, right? So it has to be student, they themselves know they have a problem, they want, they want to get some assistance with it and they're concerned that if they bring themselves forward, that there's going to be disciplinary consequences introduced for disclosing their own behavior.
That's what some colleges might call an amnesty provision or something like that.
Okay, right, right, right. So similarly then, if they're not doing it, but they know that a friend is going on their behalf or somebody else is saying, I, you know, this student is struggling, and they're part of that, you know, they also would be exempt. They themselves aren't in a position to, or are uncomfortable going forward themselves, but they are enlisting the help of someone else to make that step for them with their knowledge. That would also be considered them seeking help. Is that the way that you interpreted it, that when it was written?
Yes, correct. So, okay, that, I mean, that's, and if that is the way we want to go, that's, I'm sort of wondering about the case where somebody says, look, my friend, I saw him or her drinking, taking these drugs the other day, I think they need help. And they refer that anonymously without that friend's knowledge, does the?
I don't believe that situation would fall under this area.
Right, okay, so, and then the question becomes at that point, if that, if confronted with this behavior at this, at that point, does that, does that preclude that person from, from getting his, taking advantage of this provision if they say, look, you're right, I need help?
Well, I guess why?
I guess, because, I mean, I'm trying, what I'm trying to do is trying to figure out whether there's a, a path that allows, that allows, that allows that sort of, from, allows somebody to take advantage of these programs without essentially saying, fine, you know, if at that point they have to, they either take advantage of the program, they either admit that they've done this and then subject to discipline.
Well, I want to, I want to draw a circle or a little bit of box around what you're suggesting to, to get your intent, you know, and then we can talk about how we would intend it. So if somebody says, my, I, I have a friend who has a substance abuse problem, they've been drinking regularly, they're drinking, or they were drinking last weekend to excess, that probably wouldn't be subject to discipline because it didn't happen in school. This, where, where it wouldn't be, where I think this is trying to carve out is if somebody reports, that someone, that somebody else in the school is currently under the influence of something, right? That they wouldn't be able to then have amnesty saying that, you know, they need help or I told that person to tell. Does it, does that make sense? No?
It does, it does. Well, I'm just, what, you know, I guess it's, because the, the, the title of this is student seeking help, right? And it's talking about referring somebody to this as opposed to reporting, reporting conduct that violates the, the student code of conduct, or that violates one of our rights or, or policy. And what I don't want to, it would be a shame if we were in a situation where somebody was reluctant to either try to refer their friend to this program, or somebody was reluctant to agree with that friend's assessment or essentially agree to be part of that program at the, somebody's behest, or their colleague's behest, because they felt that if they did so, that they would just be subject to discipline as a result, as a result of that. And so, I mean, I don't know if there's a, there's a way to thread that needle, but what I'm, so I'm, you know, you're thinking of a situation where you're going, look, I'm worried about my friend because I saw him drinking in school. And that's, and it happens every day kind of thing. I think they need help. And then they are asked by the administration at that point, or somebody within this, within the supports that we have, says, your friend, you have a friend, anonymously, who saw you engaging in this behavior and thinks you need, had needed help. I, we are here to provide you that help. And then at that point, the person who is being approached under this policy in theory would say, well, if I accept that help, then I've now violated the code of conduct and I'm subject to discipline. Is that how that would, is that how that would apply? Because they weren't knowingly referred. They didn't, they didn't know that somebody was referring them, they didn't know that somebody was seeking help on their behalf.
It presents a challenge. Go ahead, Ed, you want, I can think of, there's, there's so many individual scenarios and you can look at two that are very similar. So if somebody's going in the bathroom and somebody else is vaping, right, all the time, and then they go and they say, so-and-so is vaping in that bathroom every day. Their intent really, they don't know the person. Like, they don't want to go into the bathroom and like, see someone vaping all the time or have it be around them, right? And then we investigate and we find out that student is, in fact, vaping in the, in the bathroom. I would think we would enact the, the policy. But if the exact same thing happened, but the student said, I'm actually concerned about that person, I, you know, they're vaping all the time and I think they need help, then should we say, well, in that case, it's student seeking help? And then the locus of control winds up on the reporter. So I don't know that there is that distinction to answer your question because I think it could become very gray and problematic as to the intent of the reporter, whether they were trying to help someone or whether they were reporting behavior that they saw in school that they want to stop in school.
So before we go to Ed, I think, do we agree that it's not necessarily clear as written right now?
Yeah.
I think we agree on that. And to that point, maybe we should decide what we wanted to say or the spirit we wanted to communicate because I think it's pretty clear this is going to go back. We're not ready to move this first reading. Instead of going to adjust it, but let's.
With the ranks, with, there's no, there's no first reading.
Fair, fair enough, you're right. But still, it needs to be adjusted. So what is the spirit that we're trying to communicate and then we can?
That's a, that's a good question though, because I, I appreciate what Rich is saying about, you know, what, you know, where you, where you draw the line on these sorts of things and how prescriptive do we need to be when it comes to that? And, you know, I haven't, I can't say that I have an answer today at this point because there is, I, you know, there's, I just want to throw a whole discussion about unintended consequence questions about one of our colleagues, right? And so I don't, I really, I, it would be, it would be a shame if people didn't, were reluctant to access these supports because of fear of, of discipline. That's the way where I'm, so I'm trying to take them away, I just, I can't do it right.
To you, Sue, did you have anything?
I just want to make sure, I, I think the word knowingly is difficult here. And I, is it, are we really trying to say any student who's self-referred or aware of the fact that someone is making a referral on their behalf? Is that the essence of it? Because if they're aware that somebody's making it on their behalf or they're referring it themselves, in both cases, I'm thinking we'd want to help that student, avoid discipline, get the help they need and, and continue on successfully. So to me, the word knowingly doesn't do that for me. And I just wondered if, if we can say it another way.
Well, you said that. I think, I think the way you articulated that is what the intent was in terms of what was brought forward to you for your consideration.
So now do it again, no?
I, aware, yeah, aware that a referral is being made on their behalf, that, that is.
Well, do they have to consent? Is it aware and consenting?
I guess if they would, if they were consenting, they probably be able to do it themselves. I think sometimes we, we want to make, we want to err on the side of getting them to help as fast as we can, right?
I, I just, just, I sense there's still a lot of gray here though. So they're aware that a referral is being made on their behalf, but is it, yeah, I want to help you, but you're, you're vaping in the bathroom.
If, if, if you worded so that, i- if we receive a report from anybody else and it's worded so broadly, that discipline couldn't be applied, that someone says, well, that person was just trying to help me, that would be a concern. I'd almost rather, like, again, if we're worried about it being too ironclad, we certainly then, if there's some discretion we want to apply to the building administrators to set the discipline aside, if they believe that it was a help-seeking exercise as opposed to, you know, a, an infraction, then maybe there's a way of articulating it that way so the administrators don't feel boxed into, well, I don't really see how I can apply this because, you know, I don't know that I have the, the flexibility to use my expression.
Board comments?
Well, I was just wondering if you could just say, any student who's, like, skip that next part and just say, any student who seeks help? Or is that too broad? I mean, does that not include the, you know, self versus, I mean, that's seeking help through another person or enlisting aid? I don't know, it just seems, like, maybe getting very specific there was the problem. Just a suggestion.
Any students seeking help individually or with the assistance of the other?
No, any student who seeks help with a drug, alcohol, or substance abuse problem and who is not under the influence or in violation of the policy.
You could even clarify that a little bit further and say, any individual who seeks help directly or indirectly through another person. I don't know if that, that's much more.
How do we feel about that?
Yeah, I want to, I want to take down as many barriers as we can.
Right.
For helping the student. And if someone else reported them and then they denied it, or have, you know, not, yeah, that's, that's a whole different issue, right? If they denied it, they needed to help or whatever, I mean, they would have to, maybe that's what you're talking about in terms of indirect.
What, I guess?
Support, yeah.
I'm sorry. My question, what is, what is indirectly seeking help? I, I, it seems a little, I, 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 I think it just puts us back in the same boat of?
Well, does it though? If the student had some agency in their referral. So if you seek help indirectly, if you're, that's why the word consent.
Awareness.
Or awareness.
Aware.
But I, some, but I, gosh, maybe I'm, maybe I'm just getting too soft. You know, at some point, you don't decide to seek help until you're confronted with the problem.
Yeah.
And so, I, I just, I, I, I don't know, maybe, like I said, maybe I'm getting too soft, but maybe, I just, I don't want to criminalize these kids who have, who may have a substance abuse problem. You know, we have enough of that in our general society at this point and people end up getting treated as criminals as opposed to treating.
But we also, people were selling drugs in the hallway, getting.
Right, and I understand, and, and, right. So, I mean, that's part of the, that's part of the issue. And so maybe, maybe there's a, a thing where, you know, you, okay, fine, this is your help, right? And your help is, constitutes things that you need to do. So if you're a recidivist when it comes to this, you're done, right? And, or, or some, or some level, or, you know, or when it's, I just, maybe, like I said, maybe there's, maybe there's not, maybe, unfortunately, maybe there's not a way to do it in a way that applies it, that allows that sort of discretion, but then is, is potentially accused of, you know, subjective.
Well, if we're bringing it back, we could look for this, I mean, because I think that the spirit of what you're saying is where, where we stand as well. We, we get, we get safe-to-safe reports sometimes about student substance abuse. And I, I'll say that, I guess not every time, there could be a circumstance where the infraction was in school. A lot of times it isn't specific or it's not in school. And I actually prefer to get a face-to-face report because it's a lot harder to follow up on an anonymous report. So I'd rather encourage the students to report that directly to someone in school so you can ask follow-up questions. The safe-to-safe report sometimes doesn't leave you with enough to make a real investigation or help a student even if the tipster intended that. So we could sort of look for that balance of, of encouraging the stepping forward either, either voluntarily or even involuntarily to maximum extent without creating a situation where, you know, someone who's abusing the law or, or breaking that rule in school can use that as a loophole.
Can we try this last, I forget, what if we just say any student seeking help? I think someone suggested that. Is that you, Roberta?
That's right.
But it doesn't address the non-seeking help.
It doesn't, doesn't, it doesn't address the person who.
Okay.
They could even be saying, you better not tell them, but it's still the right thing to do, right? We would want them to tell.
We want them to tell.
So you're going to bring it back to us? All right. Last point.
They're going to bring it back to us, we got to go through the whole thing, right? There's one.
Yeah, you're going to bring it back.
There's a section, I'm sorry, there's a section here on page five, number six, additional penalties for prohibited use of antibiotic steroids.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I should.
Oh.
Last point on that.
Oh, last point on that one.
Yeah.
No, I don't have any other points on that. I thought you were ready to jettison.
No, actually, I thought you had something else that you made.
So, two things on this. One, is, is antibiotic steroids enough in terms of, because I mean, there are other performance-enhancing drugs that aren't necessarily antibiotic steroids? You know, whether you're talking about fethamines or any sort of other types of drugs that are intended to enhance athletic performance, painkillers, I, you know, I, there's probably a whole host of things. Painkillers, I, you know, I, there's probably, um, a whole host of things.
So I come on the P I double A, do we know?
These specific violations?
Well, I mean, if we just were putting in, in the reg, of the P I double A practice that we, as a P I double A participating school, would need to follow, that would be one thing, then I don't know that we have, then there'd be an argument to use their language.
But even, but even still, I think Todd's point is, I would, antibiotic steroids is pretty, pretty narrow, you know, you could be using something that's not an antibiotic steroid in hopes of boosting the athletic performance. So, there wouldn't be anything that would preclude us from making that a little more stringent.
Well, well, I guess there would be nothing from the P I double A standpoint from going beyond, right, what they're saying.
Yeah, I, P I double A has guidelines for antibiotic steroids. I don't know, I don't see any reason why you're not, why you're not permitted to regulate further than what P I double A regulates. But the, the reason why, at least currently, it's worded the way it is, is that true?
Sure, I'm sure, so, U S O C has the list of banned substances, I'm sorry, you know, the, the U S A, U N, U S, you know, to drug testing, you know, the sports drug testing agencies, you know, they.
Or performance enhancement.
Right, I mean, it could be just P E Bs, right, I guess you could say, but you probably, you probably wanna, you probably wanna reference, you probably wanna reference an actual list of somebody.
So this, it's a good point, because that refers back to what's written in the policy, controlled, because the, the controlled substance is defined, and one of the listings is about steroids, so if, if there's concern about how it's written in the regulation, we should also look at the policy definition, if that needs to change, or if we need to work on this more, bring it back to you.
Well, controlled, so, so then can that be controlled substances, additional, okay, so that just draws out antibiotic steroids from the controlled substances?
Yeah, it's a very specific, I mean, it.
Did I just screw something up?
No, so, that was, that defines.
We'd rather get it clarified, and that substance of the reg just draws out additional for that particular substance.
Yeah, and then I, I have to follow up on that same section, so, in the end of that section, says no student shall be eligible to resume participation unless there has been a medical determination that no residual evidence of steroid exists, I imagine, if you change the thing. I guess my question is, it was a little vague to me that who determines that, I mean, is that something that the, the student athlete has to provide? It's, look, I, here's my clean blood test, or is that something that the school is gonna go test the, the student now before they get out on the, on the hardwood again, right, or the football, or the gridiron, you know, like.
Good try, good try, we did it.
Well, I tell you how I read it at the ta- at the table, but I, I guess I'd have to confirm with our athletic director to be sure that it's the way they read it. That if somebody disassumes then that somebody's already been identified as a user of antibiotic steroids, and then we say the burden's on you, provide medical documentation, if there's no residual evidence of, of the steroid, then you comply. They have to go out and provide that medical documentation.
And then, yeah, and then you'll have to, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to confirm that, put that on the list, or, if you want that clarifying language here, we could bring it back that way, but, I mean, that's what they do.
And I, I'd maybe say something about satisfactory or something like, because, you know, you know, I mean, you just, you just go to your own doctor and go, hey, run, you know, show up at lab court, run the test. I, if that's, if that's the intent of this, is that they, they have to provide their own blood tests, or, or, you know, urine sample, or something that says, you know, that, that is, that the effects of this drug are no longer, this drug is no longer in your system. I think it'd be clarifying.
Board? Michelle?
Thank you, really thorough discussion regarding this, and I think bringing it back is a really good idea, because of the wording, but I also think that the committee is open to it, that what I'm just hearing is, um, we're in this junk-stuck position of what is appropriate discipline versus intervention? And this is something that school districts wrestle with all the time, right? Is a suspension, um, detention, the appropriate means to the end? Or is our, our first, second, and third step, and then are we moving into those other things? And I would just ask that the committee maybe wants to contemplate that a little bit before it gets brought back, because what I'm hearing, it really will encourage students both who may be suffering with the addiction, and friends of, or watching their friends suffer with the addiction, feel that there's a, an ends to the means to help them, right? And I understand that it's a, it's a very challenging position to be in, but I think I, as someone who's a parent, and then someone who's charged with keeping everybody safe, um, want to look at the intent of helping first, um, and knowing that the age group that we're talking about here is initially resistant to help anyway, right? So, um, but if you're coming to school using substances, it's clearly a problem, right? This is not, it's what I'm talking about, we've been recreational, hey, that's cool, I'm going to somebody's house, we're having a party, we're talking about somebody who's medicating, using a substance to either cope or do something to get through their school day or their work day. And I would just say to the committee, you might wanna wrestle with that a little bit more, and that may mean a, a different thing here. We've talked in the past just a little bit about tools that we should be providing students to also seek help anonymously, because I think this reporting, the whole discipline piece, does limit what someone feels comfortable doing for their friend. Best of intentions, I wanna help my friend, but I really don't wanna get them in trouble, and I know I may lose my friendship over this. We've talked, you know, amongst ourselves over the past couple of years, we've talked about things in the back of bathroom doors where kids can, it lists where the resources are, because I would know, I don't know that I would want my business aired out at school with a guidance counselor or a mental health specialist or that type of thing, I may wanna do it off-site, maybe very private, or maybe very private things happening in my home that I can't cope with, but it's manifesting in a behavior for me to cope heading to school. So I just, you know, I'm trying to throw monkey wrench in all of this, but I thought Todd's points and the discussions were very insightful about how we're kind of caught in this position of helping and yet setting guidelines and rules that keep everybody safe and healthy in our buildings, so.
I, I think that's right, I think that's right, and I think it's.
I'm not sure how you wanna charge the administration to bring it back, either.
Well, I mean, I think I hear you, I hope, and that's.
Well, we've had a, we've had a three-pronged approach to addressing, uh, substance abuse education through our curriculum and the programs that we have to offer, and that spiral in different ways, I don't know, through our schools. Discipline, if there's a concern that arises, that there's gotta be a nexus to the school, right? I mean, if the student's using on the weekend, or we find out about behaviors that aren't on the school, unless there's some nexus to school, there isn't a disciplinary issue, we just go with the third piece, but I'm not, it's not a hierarchy, it's just three pieces, which is support, and oftentimes it's in combination. The education is for every student, when there's discipline, it's generally not, you're suspended and forget about everything else. Supports are added, counseling, we have a, we have a, uh, a, a drug and alcohol program that students work with at the school, that oftentimes is part of what takes place, whether there's discipline or not. So what's, what's complicated with discipline is what you wanna do about a student who comes and distributes, engages in, shares, some illegal substances in the school? And, you know, we have taken the approach that when students are caught doing those things, there's a disciplinary consequence as well as support, right? So if you want us to change that, then that is a direction, it's a redirection to come back with, because there's been a lot of voices who said, don't change that, in fact, you're not hard enough. You know, and we do want the student on the other side, we believe our philosophy is that the student changes that behavior and is set on a better path. Discipline is sometimes part of that course correction, if there's an infraction in school, but the support is most fundamental to changing the behavior. So that is the approach that we want to have, you know, in our, in our practice, but if you want what I just said altered, yeah, you should tell us before we bring it back.
It doesn't, it doesn't sound like the feedback that we've gotten and what you're saying are at, at odds with each other. It sounds like the committee and, and the board is saying, we want, we don't wanna prevent students from seeking help, and we don't wanna impose barriers to students seeking help, not that there shouldn't be discipline, and I hope that others agree when I've synthesized that well.
So it's what I said earlier, in response to what you said, we wanna, we wanna create as wide a field possible for students to bring forward concerns about themselves or others, without making it too easy in a loophole, just to always claim that and allow bad behaviors to take place in school without consequences, so that, so that the balance we'd be trying to strike.
And there's, yeah, and there's, there's a difference between, you know, we, we use the example of somebody saying, well, they're vaping in the bathroom all the time, and I want you to, you know, there's a difference between, I think, and I know you said it's a bit, put the onus on the reporter, but they were figuring out what the intent of the reporter is, but maybe that's where we have to go, we have to say, if this person says, look, I saw this behavior and my friend needs help, versus, I saw this behavior and you should know this, because that's a violation of the code. And so, it's, if, 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 there is, you know, it's, there is some, I think there is some way to draft this in a way that allows for the former thing to happen without necessarily the overhanging threat of adverse consequences before, before getting a help.
Well, there's, but the piece I said as well about administrative discretion, which was brought up in a prior conversation, might also be abused in this situation. Although, because the administrator will sometimes say, I don't see how I can not apply consequences here. Another regulation we have requires them to apply consequences as consistently as possible, and we want that, so there's no profiling of students or predetermining outcomes of students, so if we put that discretion in, we wouldn't want a situation where certain kids were having it, you know, median interpretation, where, where that was helped, but with other kids, they were getting the consequence. So, that was written to eliminate that discretion, maybe you'd want to introduce it if you feel it would be abuse, but that's the trade-off, I think.
And Mr. Wired, I think if I qualified my comments too, because I, I don't want it to appear that I'm saying, you know, let me, let me say what I want it to appear, what, where my line is, okay? If someone is distributing, selling, that's harming other people. If someone is harming themselves, self-destructive behavior, that, I think they fall under two different categories for discipline. So, one is an ability to help somebody who's doing self-destructive behavior to themselves. The other is a crime, because it's illegal to sell drugs, and you're selling them on school property, or to distribute alcohol to a friend, or those types of things are illegal, and you are also causing harm to other people.
It just isn't always that clear, because where does possession fall? They're all crimes, if you have that in school, if you're using it, if you're possessing, if you're selling, they're all crimes. So someone could possess, and are they in need of help, because they're an addict and they need help? Or are they planning on selling that, or even just sharing it with their friends at school, which is another harming others piece? So, at the point of discovery, we don't, that's, the kids aren't always caught in the act of, you know, consuming, so, or after they're under the, the influence.
So we don't, we don't.
Why I'm sitting on this side, but we're here.
No, it's, that's, that's, that's a challenge, I'm just trying to.
Sure, no, I think they break.
We don't fundamentally wanna alter what district practice is, or district philosophy around it, we just want the regulation to reflect the spirit of that. So you're gonna labor in the regulation and bring it back to us, everybody else agree? Awesome, okay.
We're still okay for a first reading on the.
For the policy, good, first reading, regulation's gonna come back to us. Eleven twenty, you know, you know what, you're right, I did not go to the public. Sarah wants to say something? Sure, to my former student.
You have to stand up and say your name, sorry, don't turn.
Uh, my name's Sarah Lynch, um, and I'm curious, how many times a year does a high school student report another student? Because they're concerned and want to help them.
You may not have those numbers exact, but can you give us an approximation? Or if not?
I, I don't feel comfortable, I'll give you an approximation, I really just don't, I don't know.
So Sarah, can we have them maybe get back, that, can that information be shared?
It might not be noble, right, because I don't know that, I mean, if someone reports that to a counselor, uh, they might help the student, and they might not tell us about it, or they might not tell even the building administrator about it, and it depends on what type of help they're reporting, and, you know, how they're trying to help that person. So, what, we could come back with something that would be a way of answering that question, but it might not, we might not be able to know all of the comprehensive ways that that's reported.
Do you, do you wanna tell them your comment about why, why you asked that question? I think they'd be interested to know.
I'd be interested to know.
If you're comfortable.
If, if, if you wanna share.
Well, just that, I feel like if they were your friends, um, a lot of kids, I don't think that many kids would be comfortable sharing that to, like, any adult, because, you know, their friend, like, I mean, somehow their friends might find out, like, if you're the only person such a friend tell, told about it, you know, the only person your friend knows, they're gonna know that it's you, whether you brought it or not.
So you're saying there's still stigma around reporting?
Sarah, I can't, I can share, in fact, we referenced it too, that safe-to-say something. Um, we have received some tips there, um, that indicate they're letting us know because they think someone needs help. Of course, that's anonymous, so we don't, you don't, you can't, since we don't know who it is, we can't really connect with that person to say.
We also received false tips, and we've also received what we believe, and it's yet to be determined, were deliberately false tips about people, and that's an abuse of that system, but that's a negative side effect where if, if somebody's gonna report something that is abuse to us to help a student, we'll deal with the other problems that that system introduces, so if that's the only way that someone is comfortable reporting something, we'd rather hear it that way than not hear it at all. But definitely the best, most proactive way is to tell someone directly, because then we could follow up with that person. The questions that we ask, sometimes the person thinks they're providing the information we need to act, but they don't, and then we're left with an incomplete report, and we can't really follow up. Or the person just comes in and says, no, that's not true, and then you only have an anonymous report, and you can't, you can't impose or force that, that assistance to that student, because what if it isn't true? We've seen cases with that, so the, the degree to which we could all, how, change the culture of, of reporting when someone needs that support, we, we could all play a role in that, but as a, as a measure of last resort, if there are folks who don't wanna report it, or are uncomfortable, safe-to-say is something I'd rather see than no report at all.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, Carter, can I say one thing? It's just, um, so I, I mean, well, two things, I share some of what Michelle was saying, especially for the length of suspension, depending on what it is, um, because if a student is not involved in positive activities, they're more likely to continue to use. So, anyway, and we know that, um, you know, substance abuse can start at this age, and the way the brain works, it can really, the abuse can turn into addiction more easily, so, but, um, on D, so, students seeking help, D, um, I think it's helpful to define the age, and according to the Pennsylvania Drug and Alcohol Abuse Control Act, a student who is fourteen years or older in the district who suffers from this, that is. who is 14 years or older in the district who suffers from this, that suspects of substance abuse, may consent to counseling or medical care related to its diagnosis and treatment. It's, isn't it 14 years or older?
I don't know the age, do you know that or?
I think 14 is.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Policies going forward, REG is covering that. Good discussion. Eleven twenty. Mr. Cottrell.
Okay, policy eleven twenty. Regulation. This question came up last school year, I believe, with the May 2019 Policy Committee meeting towards the end of the school year, about the written correspondence being included in the board agenda. And after uncovering it, in short summary, there was a practice put in place after the Public Information Committee recommended that it no longer be written into the school board agenda due to limited, what they were trying to do is cut down on the amount of paper that was being generated. That, that recommendation at Public Information Committee made its way onto a school board agenda listed, but the policy and regulation were never changed to reflect that practice that has now been in place for a number of years. So that question came up and so we endeavored to correct the record. Either way, at this point, whether it was being recommended to continue with that practice or go back and follow what was in the policy and regulation, the policy committee referred it back to the PI committee for discussion. Public Information Committee had the discussion, decided that they wanted to do a trial period of including it. And then we would look at it again around this timeframe here in January. And so at this point, we bring to you a continuation of the language in the policy and regulation with some additional language. So that would be changing the practice that had been in place prior. So include the correspondence, change the time in which it's received, which you see is the change in the policy, which is then elaborated upon in the regulation. And those, that wording that's used in the regulation was the wording that was recommended from the Public Information Committee to consider. Along with additionally saying it must comply with all board policy and administrative regulation regarding civility. And this is on page one of the regulation. And then the solicitation part was also incorporated along with public information recommendations.
This is pretty standard. Anybody have anything? Public?
You say comply, number three, comply in all aspects.
In the policy, right?
I have a question.
Yes.
This doesn't talk about, it says that no anonymous correspondence can be brought to the question of the members in board. But we did say it has to include the names that been, I don't know. Start back, never mind, I answer my own question, my own head.
Okay.
All right, got it.
Okay.
Got it.
Recommend for first reading. Fifty-two, twenty-three, promotion.
Are you taking any questions and comments?
I, I look that way.
Sorry. I just have, today there was a committee meeting and in this policy, maybe in the regulation, it talks about public comment during committee meetings.
Yep.
During the curriculum committee meeting today, there were two things. There was, there was no agenda at all, nothing published, nothing handed out for, for the public to review or, or follow along with. And then there was no public comment. I did ask a board member about that and, and was told that there isn't public comment, but under this regulation, it does say that during committee meetings, tact residents and taxpayers are invited to address the board during designated public comment periods when it titles on the agenda. So I just wondered how that.
Well, so, so what, so what was the rationale? Did the, say that, Mr. Cottrell?
Well, I, I think the intention of what the committee meeting's heading is board committees.
Yeah.
And there are other committees that meet, such as the curriculum council, but it's not, it's not a board committee.
That's why we have.
It's a district committee. So I think the heading meant board committees.
Whether curriculum council has public comment can be discussed separately, right? Like, you could decide that it's just board committees that's covered by this reg, but curriculum council should also have public comment or not. Like, that can be a, not all committee meetings necessarily have a designated public comment time. I don't know that diversity does. There are, you know, there's an agenda topic, I don't know if it handouts traditionally have been given out. We can move in a direction, we're all board and all district committees function, but those committees often function more like a work session than, than a discussion or items on a agenda that are mentioned and reviewed with public comment.
I think that needs to say board committees there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it refers to the board chair in the second.
So then let's add the word.
What are? Yeah, and also what are the, um.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
No, you're fine, go.
That, um, interschool council, is that a district committee or?
District, not board. Board committees, the board are the members.
But at interschool council, the public's always welcome to participate. And diversity.
And diversity.
Just open comments, yeah.
I've never seen anybody ask a question at interschool council and, from the audience, and be discouraged. I've heard people say, we're glad you're here and we want to hear from you.
So let me ask this, at, at curriculum council today, there was a specific ask during the meeting to give public comment and that was denied?
Yes.
Yeah. I asked Michelle, we can make public comments and she said. Right, you talked to me.
Yeah.
I'm not running, I was there to observe because I'm the new board president, so I thought I might introduce myself to people. But when you ran the meeting, so.
Well, you can understand our concern that we wanted this committee so that we could have discourse around literacy. And you, as a board, chose to create a different format for that that was proposed. And it was, one of the main pieces to that, or one of our concerns, was that it would be a manufactured group of people engaging in a conversation and that comment from the public wouldn't, and, and discourse would not be encouraged. And so there were moments and things, questions that people who spend a lot of time in the district on literacy practices and engaged in meetings and things that, who have that information, would have liked to ask questions or ask for elaboration or things like that. And it, there was no ability to do that.
Okay, so, I mean, I don't, I think what might not be the best use of our time here is of trying to clarify what specifically happened there. I don't think that that's going to happen. So maybe we can have a conversation about what, what we want the public engagement to be like at that meeting. But as for this, I think we're all in agreement that we're going to add the word board in front of that. And if anybody has anything new, you have some news?
I just wanted to make one clarification, that there was an agenda, it was posted on the district calendar because I looked at it before the meeting. So it, you know, it was on the calendar and.
I'm sorry, that's the actual, like, usually you get something like this with all the information, yeah.
So you're talking about supplementary material?
Yeah, I think the agenda had two bullet points.
Okay. All right. The words on that, the words posted. But Kate, your, your comments are noted, okay?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I, I wasn't there, I think some, maybe a lot weren't there, but your comments are noted.
I appreciate it.
No problem. Any other comments to this? Any other public comment to eleven twenty? All right, so we can, we got the word of. Let's keep going, Greg. So first, policy and REG eleven twenty are good for first reading, it sounds like. Both. Or policy for first reading, REG is good. Fifty-two, twenty-three, promotion.
So this policy was last reviewed in 2013, as you can see. And this is one where individual questions would come up at different times, maybe as a student would enroll or for the end of the school year, when, when there's consideration or a parent request or acceleration. And so first off, we didn't feel the short title of promotion captured really everything that was in this policy or that, or that we wanted in this policy to really spell out, not in detail, but in general, we wanted to make sure we were conveying that when there's consideration for acceleration or retention in particular, that there would be some type of evaluation considered. That certainly could be a, an evaluation if a parent signed off approval with a school psychologist. But it may not necessarily have to be like that because certainly a parent would have the right to say yes or no to that and would still want to consider their circumstances. There's other ways that we could do an evaluation that we mentioned, try and get all pieces of data, social, emotional health, take into consideration the age of the child, their academic record, all the different variables we would certainly want to consider to either accelerate someone or, or retain, which does not happen very often. A strong consideration and early consideration, if someone's not doing well, we want to try to find the right supports in place, the right help so that they're not in a situation for retention, unless everybody, including the parent, really feels like that's an agreed upon mechanism and will be in the best interest of a student. Because certainly the research indicates that retaining students doesn't necessarily do anything. In fact, may, we have to be wary that it may cause more concern and damage. So really, it just elaborates a little bit more. We feel that this is a little bit more standing for any request for acceleration or consideration for retention. Certainly, we want to work with parents through that process.
Jamie, Jamie, did you?
Camera?
Did you want to take your camera?
Thank you.
I didn't have anything to this. Board? Public? First reading.
Thank you.
Fifty-two, twenty-seven.
Okay, as you see, there are no recommended changes to graduation requirements policy, which was last revised in 2014, but I included it on this agenda because I thought it would be a good opportunity. If there are no changes, we can at least mark this review. As discussed and recommended at December Education Committee, the presentation on changing the graduation requirements related to English, that was moved forward and incorporated into the program of studies. That was approved at the board level. So this wording changes the regulation to reflect the approved program of studies to the board then.